Welcome, everybody. I call to order this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It's a regular session. And it is 7:30 PM, June 8th. First order of business is to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Will the clerk take the roll?
Council President Collins?
Here.
Council Vice President Haley?
Here.
Councilwoman Clough?
Here.
Councilwoman McAtee?
Here.
Councilman Viele?
Here.
All members present.
Item four on our agenda tonight is the approval of minutes from previous meetings. Do I hear a motion?
I move approval of the meetings from May 26, 2015, and with the regular session, May 26, 2015. That includes both work session and regular session.
Second?
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to item five on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the items in the consent agenda.
Second?
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 That carries unanimously as well. Item six on our agenda is licenses. Six A is a resolution granting victraling, dance and holiday sales licenses and a tourist accommodations license for 11 spaces, 14 persons to Pamphileos, Inc., doing business as Bistro by the Sea. 364 Cards Pond Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, 02879. Application by Richard Paola, president. Is Richard here?
Good evening. I'm Jim Aukerman. I'm the attorney for Bill Hanny at Theater by the Sea. And the bistro is going to be under new management this season, and so we need to have a couple of licenses transferred, and we'd appreciate your accommodating them. I think they're going to be good operators there. They actually already operate the Vanilla Bean right down the road. Same family, same business. And they have a restaurant up in Providence, Cumberland, rather. So it's a tavern. It has the usual accommodations for a tavern, and we appreciate your consideration.
All right. Any questions? Great. All right. Do I hear a motion?
I move approval of new license six A, subject to the approval of the liquor transfer in the public hearing seven A.
I second that motion.
So moved. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 That carries unanimously. Congratulations. License B is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the Bike MS Ride the Road on Saturday, June 20th, 2015, and Sunday, June 21st, 2015, to the National MS Society, Greater New England Chapter, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event in the amounts specified by the risk manager, ride out approval and approval by the town's Traffic and Transportation Review Committee, proceeds to benefit the National MS Society, Greater New England Chapter. And the application is by Bill Sykes, sports manager, promoter line.
Hi. I'm Megan. I'm representing the National MS Society. And we've met with the town, planning and police, and we've amended our route so that it's safer, and our final step is your approval, basically.
Does anybody have any questions for the application?
Could you tell us about the race and how much it is to register and where people would register to be in, you know, to-
Sure.
... submit to the race?
We start at the Narragansett Peer School, and it's a really roundabout way we get to URI. And it's 75 miles or 100 miles on the first day, and the second day it's 75 miles. It's $70 to register, and it's a $300 minimum fundraising. And we raise about 500, and last year we raised 530,000 with this. And it's not a race, it's just a ride. We have rest stops along the way, so people can take breaks and stuff.
Quite an endeavor.
It is.
To sign up for the race would be quite a feat to complete.
Yes, a challenge, for sure.
Any other questions? Great. Well, I would entertain a motion.
I move approval of new license six B. Second?
So moved. Any further comments? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Item seven on our agenda tonight is public hearings. And A, I'll open this public hearing, is relative to an application for transfer of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of 1956. As amended and as follows, a Class B tavern liquor license, transfer of a Class B tavern liquor license from Bistro by the Sea by manager to the manager of Pamphileos, Inc., Cards Pond Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Richard Paola, president of the first-floor gazebo for intermission tents on tennis court, 32-by-50-foot patio in accordance with special use permits granted by the zoning board of review on August 15th, 2007, and March 17th, 2010, and is further defined in the site plan on file in town clerk's office. Said transfer is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and the satisfaction of all claims.
Again, Jim Aukerman, on behalf of the Bistro by the Sea, Bill Hanny. I believe that the clerk's office has in hand at this point the certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation. They are very thorough, I must say, in their requirements in terms of these transfers, rightly so. And I think we've met all the requirements, and would ask for the same reasons that the victraling and tourist accommodation license be transferred, that the liquor license be transferred as well. I think they'll be a good operation.
Dale, do you have any correspondence?
So it's basically just a transfer from one ownership interest to another, or?
Yes. Whoever's operating the restaurant needs to have the license as well. And Mr. Paola is going to be operating the restaurant, and so he'll have the license with the restaurant.
And the hours won't change, or the-
Same operation, yeah.
Okay.
Different menu, though. Nice menu. I don't know if you saw it, if it's in your packet or not, but-
Yes.
Would you like to describe it for us?
Well.
Maybe he's hungry.
Yeah, don't make us hungry. Never mind. Any further comments, questions? All right. I entertain a motion to approve.
Well, first, we-
Sorry. Yeah, we gotta close the public here. Motion to close the public. Oh. Does anybody from the public want to talk on this issue? Okay.
I move we close the public hearing. Second?
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. The public hearing is closed. Now I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to transfer the Class B tavern liquor license from the Bistro by the Sea LLC to Pamphileos, Inc., doing business as Bistro by the Sea. And said transfer is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and the satisfaction of all claims. Second?
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jim, just stay right there. Public hearing B is a public hearing for the purpose of considering an application for amendments to the zoning ordinance, Appendix B, parcel subject to special conditions of previous zoning amendments. Zoning ordinance map symbol 19, as shown here, for properly located at 2625A Commodore Perry Highway, also known as the Edward Everett Hale House, as shown on the map below. Said premise is designated as plat 80-2, lot 21, and is comprised of approximately 72,309 square feet, or 1.66 acres. Application by James V. Aukerman, president, Resources Holding Society, 60 South County Commons Way. And before we get to any testimony, Dale, would you like to-
Yes, we had a lot of communication. It is April 50, 2015, under the South Kingstown Planning Board, recommending the amendment to the zoning map and property location to be allowed, and to 31 nonprofit museums along the third, and to accommodate the particular needs as we do, and to tolerate findings of that, and findings of consistency with the proposed management.
Thank you. Come forward, please. So tell us what this is about.
Okay. My name is Jim Aukerman again. For the record, I formed Resources Holding Company in December in order to facilitate the transfer of the Hale House from the Petticoamsket Historical Society, which was no longer able to continue to maintain it, to the South Kingstown Land Trust. And in the interim, the Land Trust has done its due diligence. We've had a lot of communications back and forth on the financial support for the Hale House. It is to be endowed through an endowment with the Rhode Island Foundation, which will allow the Land Trust to provide stewardship for the property without being a financial burden on the Land Trust. We've also partnered with the Preserve Rhode Island, which is a longstanding organization, I think it was formed in 1956, formerly called the Heritage Foundation of Rhode Island, which is formed to preserve the heritage of Rhode Island. And their function in this is going to be as a lessee from the Land Trust. They will act as sort of a financial conduit, if you will. They'll take funds from the foundation and use it for the maintenance and support of the building. In addition to being the fiscal agent, they will also provide through an organization called the Matunik Preservation Society, the day-to-day operation of the building. They'll provide docents during the summer months for visitors who wish to come through, and they'll also open the place in the spring, close it in the fall. In addition, we anticipate that the falling-down garage on the property will be restored, rebuilt basically on the same footprint, and provide storage space during the off-season for items in the collection that are temperature-sensitive, and also provide some space for support staff for the museum to meet during the winter months. Just to give you an idea of what the summer calendar is for this summer, there's going to be the house open for visitation starting June 26th through September 5th. There'll be a Hale House lecture by Joan Yonkin on June 26th, I believe, on the Hale family. Another lecture later in the summer by the Deputy General Counsel for the National Trust for Historic Preservation on why old places matter. There'll be a non-amplified classical guitar concert later in the summer, and a lecture by Anna Marley from the curator of the American Historic Art at the Pennsylvania Academy of Fine Arts. Those are just kind of the types of program that we anticipate having. The Petticoamsket Historical Society did a terrific job restoring the building. We anticipate that the endowment will be sufficient to continue to maintain it. When the building was restored several years ago, prior to that, had been a summer family home with, I believe, eight bedrooms and several bathrooms, and serviced by a cesspool. That was decommissioned and a new septic tank, septic system was installed, which has more than enough capacity for the limited amount of seasonal use in the buildings. I think that's about a good summary as I can give you, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jim. One question you might have heard us discussing during the work session is there's language in the zoning language change that would allow fundraising by the owner of the property, which would be the Land Trust in this case, and we're wondering what the reason is for having them be able to do the fundraising at that site.
Yeah, that was always in the wording, even when the Petticoamsket Historical Society got the zone changed several years ago. To my recollection, there was only one fundraiser ever held there. It was done by the Garden Club, actually, and they, I believe, split the proceeds of that between the Land Trust and the Petticoamsket Historical, and those funds are still available for the use of the maintenance of the building. Mike Sherry from the Land Trust is here. He may want to address that further, but I don't anticipate that there's going to be much in the way of fundraising activities there at the Hale House. Mike, do you want?
Currently, the funds that were raised, Mike Sherry, for the record, president of South Kingstown Land Trust. Currently, when we take possession of the property, the funds that were raised by the Garden Club joint fundraiser will go to the Hale House, and they've stayed with the Hale House while Petticoamsket had it. They'll transfer over to us for the care of the Hale House. Fundraising activities have been restricted. These events that Jim's talking about are not fundraisers in the class sense. We're not inviting people and raffling and doing that sort of thing, so that will not be going on there. That's more of a cultural event for limited, for only a few people. You can only probably take 20 to 30 people in that venue. So these are very restricted events.
Mike, and maybe Jim, I could ask either one of you this. In the prior language, it said limited to Petticoamsket fundraiser events, and that, I believe, was the end of it, but you added in for the owner of the property and/or its lessee.
I think Jim, want to address that?
Yeah.
So that's the change I'm seeing, that seems to be of some concern, because it's not limited to, it could be whoever owns the property or whoever you lease it to.
That's right. That's right. Typically, it's not good policy to tie a zone change to a particular owner. In other words, the zone change usually goes with the property. And back when we got the original zone change from R80, I believe it was, to government and institutional, there was concern in the neighborhood about, you know, what was going to happen with the building and so forth. And we agreed at that time that it should be limited to the Petticoamsket. As it turned out, I'm not sure that that was a good decision, because it required us to come back to the council again to change not the use of the building or the property, but the ownership. So the zone change should go with the property, and if the uses are the same as they were with Petticoamsket, they should be the same for the Land Trust or whoever may own the property in the future. By the way, there is a sort of an exit strategy in the unlikely event that the Land Trust doesn't keep the property. We've agreed with the Petticoamsket that it would go to another 501(c)(3) if we could find one that was interested. So I think that's why we don't want limiting language there.
I think the zone change for the museum, any fundraising that they do would be on a smaller scale, would be in keeping with what we, I think the zone change in some instances might have to go to the person that, you know, the museum itself. I don't know that any 501(c)(3) going in there would be in keeping with what the museum would be doing.
It depends. I mean, if-
What you're asking us is to do a broad-
Right. We're asking-
Judgment.
We're asking for a zone change to go with the property, essentially. And I believe that if the Land Trust, in the unlikely event that they decided not to keep it for any reason, the next likely owner would be Preserve Rhode Island or some organization similar to that. And the endowment would go with the property.
And the fundraising events in the past have been totally to support the museum, or would they support, could you have a fundraising event there that could support another cause?
There was one fundraiser, I believe, about three or four years ago by the Garden Club, and I believe they determined that half of the proceeds, correct me if I'm wrong, I think half the proceeds went to the Hale House and the other half went to the Land Trust.
I guess the only concern here, Jim, is whoever the owner of the property might be after you, and/or its lessee, so, I mean, it's really an unknown entity to us. We can't predict that. And I guess that's the concern.
That's true. I think that's true with any zone change. You don't know who the owner of the property is necessarily going to be, or who their lessee is going to be. You have to be comfortable that the use that you're allowing, if it stays with the property, is going to be an appropriate use.
But obviously, the use of this property is very limited in the first place.
It is. It's self-limiting, because there's no heat in the building, there's no use of it other than during the summer months.
And even your hours of operation, I mean.
Well, that's interesting. The planning board actually recommended that the limited hours of operation be deleted, because they thought it would be more successful if it had longer hours. And we're not opposed to that, but we didn't ask for that.
So you're saying the language would say you could only sell it to another 501(c)(3), or they would be the leasing? They would be the owner and the leasing? Or could another 501(c)(3) purchase it and then lease it to?
In theory, I suppose another 501(c)(3) could lease it to a non-501(c)(3), but I don't know where you're going to find the, an organization that's going to want to, you know, provide the docents and the support and so forth that's required to maintain a museum like that.
I might add, too. Preserve Rhode Island operates in the same mode. They own Blythewald, and they have a lessee that operates it. So this model is used by PRI. And the conditions that are put on by the zoning stay with whoever the owner would be. So everybody would have to operate under the same conditions. It would maybe just a different owner, different operator. So this model does, you know, does exist, and it's being used by PRI quite successfully.
I just want to clarify this. Two separate sections that we're talking about here. Clearly, the ownership is not a problem. The first paragraph that's been proposed says, "The owner of the property and/or its lessee may use the property for a small-scale seasonal museum." I don't think anybody's concerned with that language. I think it's the second sentence that provides that the, what was originally said Petticoamsket fundraising events now is going to say fundraising events for the owner of the property and/or its lessee. I think the question was, why would there be, why would there be a need for fundraising for anybody other than the museum? It wasn't a question of the ownership. It was a question of the proposal for fundraising by the property owner or the museum, because then the museum property would be used for a purpose other than the museum, in fact. So it's not the ownership, Jimmy. It's the question of the fundraising for the property owner. Because essentially, your language here would suggest that the Land Trust could, in fact, hold fundraising events at this location, or if you were to transfer it to some other 501(c)(3) for ownership purposes. Even though it was, ownership still had to maintain it for preservation of a museum, that for its own purpose, it could use it for fundraising purposes. That was the question that raised. It wasn't the ownership issue, but rather that second section dealing with an opportunity for greater flexibility for fundraising, which brought concern.
Maybe what you want to do is specify that the fundraising be solely for the benefit of the Hale House, then. I don't have a problem with that.
All right. I think that's what we're trying to clarify, is whether there was-
That's the intent.
... the reasons, or the reason.
Yeah. I don't have a problem.
Yeah. Fundraising should be restricted to the Hale House. That's why earlier I mentioned that the, I think it was $13,000 was raised for Petticoamsket for the Hale House account within Petticoamsket. That has come along with the house. So the funds that were raised back then have continued to stay with the house, even though Petticoamsket doesn't have it anymore. So they will transfer to us, but held in account for specifically for Hale House.
All we're trying to do is to make sure that the language reflects what the intent was, and I think that one was a little bit broader than what it needed to be.
Okay. Right. We can narrow that right down to specifically Hale House.
If we do that, though, that kind of puts the Garden Club out, because, you know, they did the fundraising and half of the money went to the Garden Club, so, I mean-
No, half of the money did not go to the Garden Club. It went to Petticoamsket and the Land Trust.
Oh, and the Land Trust. Okay.
There was a total of $26,000 raised, 13 went to Petticoamsket, 13 went to the Land Trust.
And then through that, it went to the Hale House somehow?
Yeah. The $13,000 that went to Petticoamsket was held in the Hale House account within the books at Petticoamsket.
So then, would we be restricting this to such a degree that the Land Trust couldn't have a fundraiser there without it going? I mean, it would have to go just to Hale House and not to the Land Trust.
And that's fine. I would prefer the language say, "If we raise money at Hale House, it is for Hale House."
Okay.
Thank you.
When I met with the Land Trust, I mean, this was one of the questions that we had talked about, because we're trying to go back to what took place in 2006, and there was a lot of restrictions that Petticoamsket was willing to live with that came through the council. So if there was going to be a broadening on that flexibility, we wanted to make sure that that was on the record. And again, the other change that's here from what we dealt with in 2006 is the, dealing with the garage or barn and the replacement of that with the building. But again, the language that's in your ordinance amendment would, in fact, limit the purpose and use of that facility for, solely for the use of the museum.
All right.
And Mike, do you have the change?
Right. Where it says fundraiser events for the owner of the property and/or its lessee, I would substitute in fundraiser events for the benefit of Hale House. That's-
That's great. Thank you.
Can I just ask one more question? What about the hours? We're going to keep them the same? I mean, there was a suggestion, you said, by the planning board to increase the hours of operation, but you're not interested in that?
No, I think we're okay with the hours.
Because it's 12 to 4 from June 15th to September 15th, and it's only three afternoons per week, right?
Yes, and then by appointment.
By appointment.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. At this time, we'll take comments from the public.
Regarding the 501(c)(3) C-
Could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Sarah Ryan. I live right next door to the Hale House, on the same side of the road. And before I, I wanted to just go on record with my concern as neighbor and the concerns of others. But I also have a question, that if things are going to be restricted entirely to the Hale House, then am I uncertain then about the 501(c)(3) that it could be transferred to someone else?
I think that would still be part of the transfer.
Still open?
I think it could be transferred to another 501(c)(3) in the future.
Yeah. So we would, you know, continue. As much as I'm in support of this proposal, I've lived on Wash Pond Road for 19 years in two different homes on the road, as in a butter to the Hale House, initially across the road, and for the last 12 years, next door to the Hale House, directly on Wash Pond. I've assumed for myself the role of watchdog for the pond- I've assumed for myself the role of watchdog for the pond as it supplies the water for my home and the Ellsbury family home. URI calls Wash Pond a unique, pristine, oligotrophic body of fresh water. And it is especially important for the Ellsbury family and myself to monitor and guard the pond as we both filter and drink the water. There are only three homes from which outsiders can see the pond, including the Hale House and Ellsbury's of mine. So it's natural for us to fear the public's temptation to return to the site with their kayaks and fishing rods. And they need to understand that there is no public access to the pond, and it's only available to those whose deeds have afforded them the rights to draw water or to recreate. All of us as residents on the road have been accepting of the previous change in zoning and its designation of governmental institutional, despite some fears that such a designation might devalue our homes, based on some hearsay from realtors and even suggestion by the town. The town's decision to accept the additional change needs to include the same sensitivities and concerns that we originally had regarding an increase in public attendance. And with our rights as public citizens, will require the same respect for our privacy and for the conservation of our properties, our road and the pond. Our road is in great need of repairs and repaving, and unless a homeowners group begins, which we now don't have one, it will just continue to decline. Being a private road, we get no supportive services from the town, except for 911. Our South Kingstown taxes continue to rise despite the responsibilities we assume willingly for private trash collection, road maintenance, and ongoing tree work. Traffic flow and safety also remains a concern if there was an increase in number of attendees at events. Tree work is considerable, a critical expense, because the road is a winding, one-lane hill with poor visibility for oncoming cars who often meet, requiring one of them to kindly back up several hundred feet into a driveway so the other car can pass. Signs need to be posted at the road entrance that it is a private road with no outlet. Another sign which is advisable to be posted on the museum's property is no public access to the pond, and trespassers will be prosecuted. There was an occasion which was ultimately corrected when a college-age volunteer advertised to his URI friends that he found a new place to drop their fishing rods and kayaks. A sign will hopefully discourage visitors who return to the museum's property with their kayaks when it's not open. The purposes and intention for the Hale House are very credible and needed in our area of Mattoonik, which could use more exposure to enjoy the rich culture that exists by musicians, artists, writers, storytellers. The biggest problem lies in the very tight location of the property under discussion, which does not afford it the adequate space it deserves and the privacy we on the road deserve. But it's with great optimism that we will continue to coexist as cooperative neighbors with the acceptance of this new zoning designation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public about this issue?
And a follow-up, just so Sarah knows, we're sending a letters out to the abutting neighbors for a get-together at the Hale House for the 14th, and invite everyone to hear everything that's transpired and let them know we are going to be a good neighbor. We've already planned the signs that you're talking about, those are in process, and we'll have people on-site a lot of the time doing maintenance, so we'll be keeping an eye on access to the pond.
Great. That's a beautiful pond. Any further comments from the council? Okay, well, I would entertain a motion to...
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that public hearing is closed. I would entertain a motion to approve with the amended language.
A motion to approve Agenda Item B with the amended language.
Right, so the amended language is, is that we're going to replace owner of the property and/or its lesssee with, for the benefit of Hale House. So that's the amendment. I would ask that you, including your motion to approve as amended, that you adopt and incorporate as your own the findings of fact, as well as the findings of consistency with the purposes of zoning, as well as the finding of consistency with the town's comprehensive plan, all is set forth in the correspondence that you received for the Planning Board dated April 14th.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all right, any further commentary on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And that brings us to Item 8 on our agenda tonight, which is Communications. Communication A is a resolution adopted May 12th, 2015 by the Exeter West Greenwich Regional School Committee in support of the House Bill H5861 and Senate Bill S0743, Acts Relating to Criminal Offenses: Weapons. That would repeal certain exemptions to the possession, prohibition of possession of weapons on school grounds, and it was continued from our last meeting on May 26th. What is our... Any comments from the...
Why don't we let the public start?
All right, we'll take comments from the public first. Please say your name into the microphone.
My name is Richard Pike, and I understand what I say tonight probably is not going to carry a lot of weight on the state, but I respectfully disagree with House Bill 5861 and Senate Bill 0743, and let me give you some of the reasons. Actually, I know it's sort of difficult. When I told my wife, she said, "Why are you going to the town council meeting?" I said, "'Cause I want to speak out about the right to carry a gun on school grounds." And she said, "No, really, why are you going to the town council meeting?" And I said, "No, I mean, right now, as a concealed carry permit holder, I have that right." But let me go through, I think, what is logically the reason that you shouldn't support those two bills. The largest mass murder created at a school was done by a bomb in 1927 in Michigan. The second largest was done by a gentleman named Chow at Virginia Polytech with two pistols, where he systematically went around and shot many students. No one was there, no carry concealed permit holder was there to prevent him from doing that. He shot everyone that he was, till he ran out of ammunition, basically. He's a mentally ill person, he didn't have a right to carry a weapon. The next one after that is one that's near and dear to everybody's heart is Sandy Hook. No one ever really mentions, there were no wounded at Sandy Hook. That is unheard of in any kind of a massacre. Adam Langza systematically executed 20 first graders and then executed the six adults that tried to stop him. No one in that school had a gun to prevent him from doing that. If a few people had carried concealed permits and were in the school, I think both of those situations, the number of dead would have been greatly reduced. And really, and Chief Espia may, you know, have different numbers, but I don't know of any person in Rhode Island that has a concealed carry permit that has shot someone. I don't know if, why this is even coming up, if there's been a couple people on school grounds that have concealed carry permits, but basically, the shootings in Rhode Island are being done by basically gang bangers and mentally ill people who shouldn't have guns to begin with. It's not the concealed carry permit holders that are the problem. So I don't know why they're being singled out. I actually think, and I cited two instances, if people had a gun on a campus, on a school ground, they could have prevented murders of innocent students. This legislation will never stop someone who wants to take innocent lives. They will find a way to get on a school ground, whether it be by bomb or whether it takes a gun, because they're not worried about a law that says you can't do it. When you're determined to kill somebody and make a name for yourself, become infamous, you're not worried about some law that says, "Oh wait, you can't do that." And really, I would like to say, and it's on a sort of a different topic, but the legislature ought to be concentrating, 239 people died in Rhode Island last year from drug overdoses. I mean, if they really want to concentrate on saving lives, that should be an area maybe they should be looking at instead of this. Thank you for your time.
Evening, members of the council. My name is Frank Sakosho. I am president of the Rhode Island Second Amendment Coalition. I'm also an attorney licensed in Rhode Island, Mass., and all the federal courts. I am also the Assistant City Solicitor for the town of Johnston. I'm here to tell you and to urge you not to support this resolution, and I'll explain to you why. The two bills that we're talking about, that you want to propose as a resolution to support, had extensive testimony up at the State House. A lot of people came up there to speak against this. I want to make sure that you're aware of it. The Police Chiefs Association came up there and spoke against this bill. The police chiefs don't want this bill. The president of the police departments, the unions, they spoke against this bill. Corrections officers, sheriffs, Capitol Police, they don't want this bill. They came up there specifically and spoke against this bill. So I'm wondering why the town council would be entertaining this motion when your law enforcement officers, the people that you trust for the security, to uphold the law and to go against criminals and prosecute criminals, don't want this bill. You should be deferring to, when it comes to safety for the children in this town, to the law enforcement agencies, and they don't want this bill. With regard to any type of legislation that tries to enforce the safety of our children, our most precious natural resource, you have to look to actual legislation which does something for safety. This legislation that's up at the State House does nothing to enhance the safety of our school. In fact, it's a dangerous and antiquated position to take, to believe that passing a resolution or putting up a big sign outside that says, "This is a gun-free zone," will save the children, will make it safer. It does nothing. It's an antiquated notion. The shooting at Sandy Hook was in a gun-free zone. The Aurora Theater shooting was in a gun-free zone. These are antiquated notions. If you need security in an area, in a facility, you put real security in place. You don't put a resolution, you don't put a sign outside, you make sure that you take the appropriate action to make sure our children are safe and our facilities are secured. The House Bill and the Senate Bill that are up the State House, do you realize that they are trying to modify a law that was put in place in 1990? For 25 years, this has been the current state of the law, and we haven't had any problems with it. The exemptions that this House and Senate Bill are trying to take out were actually put in place, were actually put in place by Attorney General Pine. He believed that these exemptions that are in there are warranted to make sure that people with carry and concealed permits and private security can be brought into our schools and our facilities to make them safer. So the Attorney General is the one that actually put these exemptions in place 25 years ago. So I ask you, where's the problem? Why are we doing this now? Has there been a serious issue that's come up that we need to address this and take those exemptions out? What would be the effect of if the House Bill or the Senate Bill actually went forward and was passed? All it would do would be keep our law enforcement and our law-abiding citizens with a carry and concealed permit out of our schools. They would actually have to disarm themselves. The effect of it is, your police officers, people that you trust, when they're off the clock, they would have to disarm themselves to go pick up their kids at school, to go to functions. How does that make our children safer? If something happened and one of our law enforcement agents, officers were on the scene, you'd require them that that person be disarmed. How does that make our children safer? You're telling the police officers, "You can't go on school property when you're off the clock, you can't have a weapon on you?" How in anyone's sense of an imagination does that make our children safer? It doesn't. The law-abiding citizens under 1147-11 and 1147-18 are actually that. They are the people that have applied for a permit, have qualified to carry a firearm, have been approved by either Attorney General or your police chief to say they can lawfully carry on those areas. Why are you saying now that after your chief of police, as a person, is lawfully able to carry a firearm, why they can't carry it in that area? You don't trust the chief of police decision, that that person is a law-abiding citizen? How are they the problem? How are they going to be an issue when it goes onto the school grounds? There are two problems that you're going to hear, or what we heard when we went up to testify at the State House from the Bloomberg people, who are basically, by the way, let you know, are being paid to go up and testify against this stuff. There are two problems with the bill, and they would say, what happens is, we need to keep these people, these people who are licensed to carry firearms off our school grounds because we don't know who they are, we don't know what qualifications. In the event there's a problem, they could be more of a risk than anything else. What they do is they don't tell you the full truth. The full truth is this, Joey Lindbeck from the AG's office came up there and testified and actually gave us the numbers. The Attorney General right now has actively about 3,3500 active carry concealed permits in the state of Rhode Island. So it's about 3,500 people are licensed through the Attorney General's office to carry. Through the cities and towns, there's approximately another 100 people. So we're talking about 4,600 and change approximately people that are licensed to carry firearms. State of Rhode Island has over 1 million people. So is there really an issue with less than 4% of the population, we need to keep these people out of the schools? Is that what we're talking about? The second problem is, and I touched on it before, these are the law-abiding citizens that the Bloomberg people and the moms against everything, they want to keep these people out. These are the people that have actually, have determined they have no criminal background, have qualified with a firearm, these are people that have ex-military experience, ex-police officers, how are they any problem at all? They don't seem to be the problem. This bill does nothing for safety. In fact, the only thing it does is guarantee that if something happens on a school grounds, a person who is licensed to carry, even our police officers, may not legally carry, and they will be disarmed at that time when something happens. So that's something that you need to really think about when you're going to say, "Well, are we going to pass this resolution or not?" When we went to testify at the State House, I posed a question to all the senators and reps of the panel. I said, "Everybody that came here to testify tonight had to pass through the metal detector, had to go by the Capitol Police who are armed." And I asked the senators and reps, I said, "I want you to be honest with yourself and answer this question. Would you feel safer if we got rid of the metal detectors, got rid of the Capitol Police, and put a nice big sign out front that said, 'This is a gun-free zone'?" And I just let the silence go. Do you think people feel safer? No, they don't. Because this doesn't, this does nothing, nothing at all, to enhance our schools, to enhance the safety on it, it does absolutely nothing.
Sarah?
Mm-hmm.
I think we might have another couple speakers to speak on this item, so if you want to wrap up.
Okay, I will wrap this up, okay? Just one other point I want to make. Last session at the State House and this session at the State House, we actually took the time to put in legislation, speak for arming our campus police at our junior colleges and at our universities. The State House overwhelmingly approves that. The State House overwhelmingly approves that. They want to make sure that our campus police are armed in the event there's a problem. This legislation wants to make sure that kindergarten through 12 people are disarmed. So think about the message that you're sending out there. Kindergarten through 12, you're on your own. But as soon as you get to college, we're going to make sure that there's campus police that are armed on the campus in case something happens. I urge you not to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Joe Kissalika. I'm a lifelong resident of Rhode Island. I too am a member of the Second Amendment Coalition. I personally do not have a permit to carry, although I wish I did. But in 1968, I was a military policeman in Vietnam. And I was in charge of a security team. And I think I know a little bit about security. And every day, we worked really hard to secure the Army Air Base that I was at. And it wasn't just a bunch of GIs there. There were also a hospital there. There were nurses. There were doctors. They were not armed. Our job was to make sure that we kept them safe. And every day, we worked really hard to make sure that our security was really up to snuff. Is there anything I know about H-5861 and 0743? Is they do just the opposite. They deflate security. They take away security. You know, I ask people all the time that talk about these gun-free zones and all this, and I would just ask people, "Are you willing to put a sign up in front of your home? This is a gun-free home?" And my second question would be, "Who would you rather have in your school? A terrorist, murderer, psychopath? Or someone like me with a weapon?" That's all I ask you to think about. This is just ludicrous. I don't know where this keeps coming from. I know, again, these people that work for Bloomberg, I know we put $100 million into the anti-gun lobby. These people are paid. They don't live in Rhode Island, many of them. They come from out of state. They're high-paid lawyers. They come in, they're lobbyists. I think we know what's best for our state, and I hope you know too. Thank you.
Are there more speakers on this from the public?
I'd certainly like to say a few things. Unfortunately, I don't see anybody here from the Rhode Island Coalition Against Gun Violence, but I would like to speak to the current Rhode Island law. The current Rhode Island law provides that no person shall have in his or her possession any firearm or other weapons on school grounds. Where "school grounds" means the property of a public or private elementary or secondary school, plus unschooled buses. There is an exception for, currently, there is an exception for people who qualify for carrying concealed weapons with a permit. Now, in many states, other than the, our surrounding, our nearby states in New England, Connecticut, Massachusetts, New York, and Maine, all have concealed carry is prohibited in K-through-12 schools. We are one of the few that don't have that. I believe that students and educators and administrators have the right to know who in the school has a gun. And there's no need for it. I completely disagree with you. I think the only people in the school that should be, should be carrying a weapon are law enforcement, police, and trained school resource officers. There is an exception in the law that the police officers would be able to be on school grounds with a weapon. I mean, there's no, that is always the exclusion. That is the exclusion in this bill. But as for everybody else, I think the teachers need to be able to know that they are, that they don't have to worry about who else is carrying a gun in their school besides the police and the trained resource officer. And I think we should support the resolution adopted by Exeter West Greenwich Regional School Committee and support a House bill, H-5861, and Senate bill, S-0743.
Yeah, I think there's going to be some comments from the council. Just hold on a second. I think the way we left this at the last session, for your information, this wasn't originated by our council. It came to us from Exeter West Greenwich. We were talking about getting more information to the council members, which through an oversight did not happen. I, I mean, I don't know if we're ready to vote on this, but I'll let other council members speak to it.
Personally, I couldn't disagree more with what Carol said. I believe if you say it's a gun-free zone, you're potentially inviting a criminal element that knows you're sitting ducks. You're talking about taking the law-abiding citizens' rights away because of potential criminal activity, which, to me, just is ludicrous. People that have a right to carry a concealed weapon have gone through many, many legal steps to do so. I personally would feel safer if something went down with this military policeman from Vietnam if he had a gun. That's the man that's going to protect you. You know, I just disagree. I think, I wouldn't, I think that you should wonder who has a gun, because these people that carry concealed weapons are the people that could save your life, and I'm sure quite often do. I would not support this.
I just have a question as a point of clarification, because I want to understand. You made a comment, Sarah, and I apologize, I don't remember your name, but you made a comment about the fact that when police are off duty or police are not representing the public, they do not have the right to bear arms, if you will. They obviously have a license to do so. So if you're telling me that a police officer ends his patrol at 3:00 and there's a call and he's heading home, if you will, he can't respond with his gun because he's not allowed to carry his gun? Is that what you're saying?
The hypothetical that you just said, if he's heading home and he's off the clock, okay? I don't know why he would get a call to respond, but assuming that he did...
It goes all over the scanners, so...
Okay. If he does, he or she does respond back, and she's act, and he or she is acting in their official capacity, then yes, they can bring the firearm onto the school grounds. The language that's in the proposed bill that's at the State House clearly has the language that says, "In the performance of his or her official duties." What that means is, your regular patrol officer, when they punch the clock, get into their regular car and drive home, they can go to Stop &amp; Shop, pick up bread and milk. If they have to on the way, go pick up their children at school, they can go to Stop &amp; Shop. But when they get on school grounds, they have to disarm themselves according to this because they're no longer actively on duty. If they're not going to investigate a crime, if they're not responding to a call, the law as written, this amendment, would tell them they have to be disarmed. It couldn't be any clearer in the language of the statute. That's why the police chiefs are against this. That's why the police unions are against this, Capitol Police, corrections officers, they don't want this. The language clearly says, if they're not in their official capacity, on duty, they can't carry. So you trust your officer when he's responding to a call, but as soon as he punches out, he can't carry anymore. Why would you support a bill like that?
No, I'm not saying you're wrong, but my second question to you is this. You know, as a parent with children in schools, I don't think it's acceptable for the children in elementary school to know that this is a gun-free zone. I don't think it's acceptable. I think they should have to wake up in the morning, get on the school bus, go to school, and feel like they're going to have a great day.
Yes.
Before you respond, listen to me. I think that that's important to the kids. I think it's important to quality of life issues. And I am not a gun advocate, but I do believe in the Second Amendment. However, I have to say that people who want to do ill-will are going to do it regardless of what you say. It's, that's the bottom line. Do I agree that people should carry guns because they have a right to? Yes, I do. But do I believe it should be touted in the school system? No, I don't.
If your school department wants to get together and say, "It's teachers cannot carry," that's fine. They have that option to do that. But to go further and say, "Law-abiding citizens who are licensed to carry anywhere in the state may not step foot on school grounds," they're overstepping their bounds. Those individuals that are licensed from the Attorney General and your own police chief should be able, you should be able to say, "I trust those people. They've been licensed." Why, what would be the...
But you're telling me the people that have the license to carry guns can absolutely go to a school, but if somebody's an off-duty police officer and they hear it on their scanner and they have a right to carry guns, they can't?
According to the language that's in here, the proposed language says, "If they're not on duty, they can't carry."
Then it needs to be changed, because the bottom line is the bottom line. And the police have been given, according to what I have read, the right to be able to respond to situations. And do I, do I want schools to be safe havens? Of course I do. And so I support the bill in that regard. But I'm telling you, if, if, I don't want to say, you know, the ordinary person off the street who has applied and gone through a rigorous process can respond, but a police officer can't? That's not right. And I don't, I don't agree that what you're telling me is part and parcel to this bill.
I have a copy of the proposed bill. If you'd like to see it, the language is right in there. It says clearly, "The provisions of this section shall not apply to any person who shall be exempt pursuant to 1147-9 in the performance of his or her official duties." So when they're not acting in their official duties, they can't carry. It doesn't get any clearer.
Then why shouldn't let the public, who has the right to have concealed arms, do the same thing?
Yes, that section's also, also stricken also. So somebody who's licensed to carry can't carry on a school grounds anyway.
Well, I think you're also, this would be banning any potential for private security because...
That's the reason why Attorney Pine put this in in 1990. In the event that the schools want to provide private security, they are now licensed under this section. And I'd like to respond to Ms. McIntyre's statement.
It's McEntee.
I apologize. I'm terrible at last name. I'm sorry about that. After Sandy Hook, most of the cities and towns around there put armed security in the, in the schools. They abandoned the gun-free zones. I don't know where you're getting your information from. There was a lot of testimony up the State House that that's opposite what you actually, what you were informed of. In addition to that, does the home ec teacher or the math teacher have a right to know who's carrying? Absolutely not. The United, the Rhode Island Supreme Court actually came down with a ruling several years ago when someone sued the Attorney General's office to find out, "Who are these people that have the carry concealed permit?" The Rhode Island Supreme Court says, "You don't have the right to know." That's why it's called a concealed carry. So the math teacher, the home ec teacher, the principal, anybody licensed by the Attorney General's office or by your police chief, you don't get the right to know who they are. It's a security measure. It's also, so the people that have a license to carry, it's called a concealed carry. So you don't know if they're carrying. You don't have a right to know what their qualifications are. But the police chief and the AG are the people who say, "That person is a person who we believe, it's warranted they should have a firearm. They've qualified. They've met all the qualifications." So in fact, why would the home ec...
Can I speak?
Yes.
I mean, as it stands now, you can't, you have to go through a metal detector to get in the courthouse. You cannot carry your gun in the courthouse.
That is correct.
You cannot carry a gun into the airport.
That is correct.
You can't go into the State Houses or many government buildings.
Correct.
And, but we're saying it's okay. So what would you, I mean, put a metal detector in all the schools and we can find out who has a gun in there? Why is it different for schools? I mean, these, these people that you say are certified to carry a concealed weapon, and I agree, they've jumped through hoops to get it. I know it's difficult to get. I am a lawyer, and I would also, like, you don't have to keep telling me what the law, the law is. But the fact is, they are not trained in crisis management. They are not police officers.
How do you know that?
If I could, if I could...
Some may, and some may not be, but not every single one.
All those places that you suggested, though, have policemen with guns stationed right in front of them.
The airport is...
The airport.
Yep. The airport is governed under federal regulations, so that's not a good example. State Houses, we already have armed police, and they have already put in a policy that says, "You don't need to carry because we provide this armed security for you." Okay? So it's not even an issue with regard to that.
What are we teaching our children?
What, excuse me?
What are we teaching our children in terms of safety, going off, walking into a school building, and knowing their day is going to be fine? Certainly, I know Sandy Hook, oh my gosh, breaks my heart. I raised two children myself. I just don't want the little ones, if you will, to have to go into school and see people with weapons or carrying weapons, and I know they're concealed, but I, I mean, what the heck are we coming to? This is insane.
Other than, other than actual police officers in uniform, the people licensed from the Attorney General and from the cities and towns, less than 4% of our population. Out of a million people, there's about 3,600 people with, with carry concealed permits. A lot of them work for a living, doing armed security. They may not be on the school grounds. So if you're talking about this is excluding these, this small group of people from the school grounds will make things safer, it's a fantasy. Less than 4,000 people you'd like to exclude, and that would make things safer, by the way, putting aside that these are the law-abiding citizens who've already jumped through hoops and have a license to carry. It doesn't make sense. If you're talking about security in schools, real security, this bill doesn't do it. We should have lockdown facilities. We should have armed police, real armed police in the building. We should have better protocols, instead of saying, "We're going to ban these 3,600 people from schools, and that's going to make things wonderful." It doesn't. This bill doesn't do security. It makes it worse. Gun-free zones are a dangerous and antiquated idea. They don't work.
Well, what's going to happen? We're going to have them at, like, Little League games now? Are we going to have them at daycare facilities? Are we going to have them at senior citizens facilities?
You already do.
They're already there.
They're concealed.
Here's the thing. This has been on the books since 1990, for 25 years. Why is it a problem now? I've had a carry concealed permit since 1996. I do all the criminal prosecutions for the town. I carry 24 hours a day. What's the problem? I'm not the problem. This bill will exclude me. So I have to worry about that. When I go to Stop &amp; Shop at night, I have to worry I ran into somebody that I just put in jail. So you want to tell me I can carry everywhere from the state of Rhode Island? The Attorney General has figured, found me to be warranted to carry a concealed, have a permit since 1996. But when I go on school grounds, I now have to disarm myself if I'm picking up my niece or my nephew? It doesn't make any sense. I'm not the problem. This bill does not address school security. And now you're saying, "I'm worried about people going onto our school grounds." Are you worried about me? Because I'm the person you're excluding. I work for the town. I prosecute the criminals. And you're worried about me? This bill makes it so that I have to disarm myself. Does nothing for security. Zero.
All right. I think we've probably heard enough to make a decision on this.
I'd just like to add that I agree with Rachel, and the brief comment I'll make is, if an administrator at Sandy Hook had a concealed carry, different result.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
So I would entertain a motion to either continue this item or to place it on file.
Or to vote on it.
I mean, I just want to make a comment. I believe the school committee is entertaining it tomorrow night. I don't know if that makes any difference, or if you want to hear from them.
I think if the school committee sends us a resolution of their own, we can consider that, and hopefully, we would hear from both sides rather than just one side of the argument.
And that's another thing. The Rhode Island Coalition Against Gun Violence, they were supposed to be here tonight. I don't see anybody from... I don't see anybody from that group. So it would be nice to hear both sides.
Agree. Do I hear a motion on this item?
Based on what I just heard from Carol, I think I would make a motion to continue it. I don't want to place it on file. I think it should be continued so that we can have further discussion and make a decision.
I'll second that.
All right. So moved. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of continuing this to our next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Any, the motion, did you vote, Rachel?
I did.
Okay. So it was-
We can have this discussion as many times as you want.
But did you vote to continue it, or did you vote?
Yeah.
Okay. It's four to one. It is continued.
Yeah.
All right. And that takes us to item 8C, a communication dated May 20, 2015, from Thomas Filiberto, requesting a letter of congratulations for Jeremy Thomas Filiberto for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Received and placed on file. And the town council, what do we want to do with this?
Did somebody, we discussed this at the work session. Somebody said they were going to, obviously, we want to send him a letter of congratulations and a proclamation for receiving the rank of, for Jeremy Thomas Filiberto for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. And I believe, was it you, Rachel, who said you were going to show up on, at the Elks?
Rachel and I.
Yep, Meg and I will both be there. And Meg, okay. And Meg and Rachel will be at the Elks on June 21st.
And I'm going to forward Dale some information about another scout so that we can have a resolution.
All right. Very good.
We also invite you to the House.
Yes. We got that under control, Dale? Very good. Do we need a motion to make that happen?
So moved.
All right. All in favor? Oh, so, all in favor, say aye.
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 Carries unanimously. Item D is a communication dated June 1, 2015, from South Kingstown High School. Principal Robert McCarthy, Keith Vallone, Chair of the Physical Education Health Department, and Lisa Wright, Executive Committee of the Parent Teacher Group, Chris Sawyer, Board President of the SK Girls Slow Pitch Softball, and Keith Vorhaben, Member of SK Healthy Places by Design, concerning pedestrian and motor vehicle safety issues at the intersection of Kingstown Road and Church Street. It's been received. What do we want to do with it?
Well, we discussed this at the work session, and I move that we send this to the Traffic Commission for further study.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Item E is a communication dated May 29, 2015, from Deb Wheeler concerning traffic issues on Route 1 in the vicinity of Sakatah Road. It's received. And what are we going to do with this one?
This is another one that, I received this letter from Deb Wheeler concerning a traffic light on Route 1, and I would move that we direct this to the Traffic Commission also.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries unanimously. Item F is a resolution adopted May 28, 2015, by the Foster Town Council in support of House Bills H-6040, H-6041, and H-6040, no, H-6042, and H-6043, and Senate Bills S-816, S-818, and 820 regarding the State Guide Plan and statewide planning program and providing for municipal choice as to roadmap RI provisions. It's been received. What are we going to do with this one?
Well, we discussed these at the work session also, and I move that we place these bills on file.
Second.
This resolution.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those are, that's placed on file. And that brings us to item nine on our agenda, which is comments from concerned, or from interested citizens, I should say. So if you have something to tell us, or tell everybody out there, please come up to the podium, say your name into the microphone, and tell us where you're from. All right. Any comments from the council? Well, I had a great time last week throwing out the first pitch at the Waves game, and happy to get to do that with a couple others of you. I hope they have a great season.
And it's election day tomorrow. There's a election for District 33, and we wish Carol luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yes. If you're in South Kingstown, make sure you go and vote. Item 10 is our Town Manager's Report.
Two items I did want to mention. In the June 4th packet, there's memorandums from John Chalk and from Doug McLean. John's memorandum indicates that the town's been successful in receiving a $310,000 grant award through DEM. That's going to be used. $200,000 will match the $200,000 that currently exists in the capital improvement program for implementation of best management practices for dealing with fecal coliform pollutants in Narrow River. $110,000 is going to be made available on a 50-50 grant toward the acquisition of a new street sweeper, which is also a component of the 15-16 capital improvement program. That was first-year funding, so we may be able to accelerate that purchase into 15-16. One of the components of that sweeper will be, it'll have to have a vacuum element to it that will be able to clean in a far better manner than, than the conventional broom sweepers that we have purchased in the past. The second grant that we've received notice on is from Community Development Block Grant with the Hurricane Sandy Disaster Recovery Program. That is in, in the amount of $944,822. That will be used in addition to a previous grant that we announced from the pre-disaster mitigation grant program through Rhode Island EMA, which was another $1.4 million. So all told, for the waterline relocation, for Matunic, we're looking at having funding available, about $2.3 million. So I want to acknowledge both the Planning Department and Public Services Department on their, their conscious effort to continue to try to find other sources of revenue to defer what local costs would be through property tax support or through water bill, water rate billing. Other than those two items, if there's anything else that's been provided to the council, I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time.
All right. Well, I'd love to echo your recognition of those departments. It's fantastic to get those grants. We could certainly use a new street sweeper. Sounds like a better one. And I-
Too bad it doesn't come with a driver. That's $220,000 it should.
Nobody on staff can drive that? I don't know. But congratulations to that.
Great job.
Anything to report from the town solicitor?
Last of the questions. I'm all set, Abel.
All right. I believe so. We don't have any appointments to make tonight. Item 13-
Abel, do we want to schedule? We have an applicant for 138. Is it 138?
There is a-
And there is a vacancy. And I think we're waiting for Meg to get back to schedule the interview. It's what we talked about.
Oh, okay.
So do we want to schedule that interview?
One second.
Sure.
One second.
All right. Item 13 is New Business.
Twenty seconds. Excuse me. So would we come in earlier?
Yeah, about 10 minutes earlier.
So it will be what time, do you think? 6:30?
We'll have to confirm availability.
Right. Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Item, no, make one. Item B, under New Business, is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to East Winds Dry Cleaners, Inc., 4619 Post Road, East Greenwich, for dry cleaning and laundry services at the unit prices bid for the period July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016. And as further described in a memorandum from the police chief to the town manager dated June 1, 2015, entitled Bid Recommendation Dry Cleaning and Laundry Services.
Lowest qualified bidder is, as presented on the agenda. We budget approximately $21,000 a year for cleaning services for both EMS and for police program. Recommend award to East Winds Dry Cleaners, as presented in chief's memo.
Do we hear a motion?
I move approval of New Business, item 13B.
Second.
So moved. Any comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries unanimously. Item F, under New Business, is a resolution authorizing fund transfers, as shown on Exhibit 1 and attached here, too. We discussed this in our work session, and we wanted to break it.
If I could just walk you through what we have on, on Exhibit 1. Exhibit 1 contains six different reserve fund transfer recommendations. We're looking to have each of these authorized this evening as a means of us getting ready to close out the 2014-15 fiscal year. Item A of the transfer request proposes to transfer $285,000 from the sources noted for specific purposes, as outlined in Trish Sunderland's memorandum of the fourth. The monies are available in those operating accounts. We're proposing that they be transferred for specific purposes into the capital reserve funds. I'd be glad to run through the detail if you need, or I'll answer any questions on that. The second resolution is for a motion asking for the transfer of $1 million from the Healthcare Reserve Fund to the other Post Employment Benefits Trust Fund. As the council knows, this is a irrevocable trust which is set up for post-employment benefits that the town has responsibility for. This is a combination of both the town liability and school liabilities. There is a million dollars that's available within that trust fund that can be assigned for the OPEB purposes to pay down future liabilities. The, the third resolution is a resolution transferring, recommending the transfer of $1 million from the general fund's unassigned fund balance to be transferred to the Community Recreation Center Fund, as outlined in the 2015-16 capital improvement program. This was also discussed with the prior council in advance of the bond issue that went before the voters last November. In September, we looked at the cost of that project and saw that the projected cost at 5.1 million was not sufficient to be able to cover what the anticipated cost of program would be. Council accepted a recommendation at that time to earmark $1 million from fund balance for that, that purpose. And tonight, what we're asking to do is to have that transfer authorized in advance of the close of the fiscal year so that the true value of what's available in fund balance will be properly stated when the audit's completed. Item D, as far as the transfers, is the normal transfer of appropriated dollars from the operating program for OPEB purposes. That's in addition to the million that will come out of the Healthcare Reserve Fund. The last two items, Items E and F, if you will, are transfers from the town's contingency account in the operating budget. $2,000 from the contingency to go toward the condominium association for the Adult Aid Services Program on Old Post Road, and an additional $2,600 that would go for fund contingency. It would be transferred to, offset doubtful receivables from, from state accounts for adult aid service, service reimbursements. There was discussion in the pre-session that the council would like to entertain a resolution to approve all of the licensed trans, all of the reserve fund transfers with the exclusion of the third item or the transfer of the general fund, unassigned fund balance to the Community Recreation Center Fund. Unless there's questions, you may want to consider that motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve the reserve fund transfers exclusive of the $1 million from the reserve fund to the community center, the $1 million there.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
So moved. Any discussion on that?
So that will just be voted on next?
Right.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries unanimously, and then we take up the resolution in regard to the $1 million for the Community Recreation Fund.
I make a motion that we approve the third item on the reserve fund transfer from the general fund unassigned, unassigned fund balance, that the available funds of $1 million be transferred to the Community Recreation Center Fund.
Second.
So moved. Discussion?
I've been clear since last July. I think that if we do build this community rec center, that we shouldn't be using our unfunded balance to pay for a building that we didn't know was going to cost this much.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to say that there was a referendum on the ballot in November, and the voters did approve, for the third time, a bond for this specific project, for the Community Recreation Center. So I believe the voters have spoken, and we're moving forward with the plan. I couldn't agree more.
There we have it. All right. Are we ready to vote on this?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion carries four to one. Item G is a resolution authorizing the abatement of uncollectible tangible personal property taxes for 2004 in the amount of $4,301.06, and uncollectible motor vehicle taxes for the year 2004 in the amount of $14,432.90, for a combined total of uncollectible 2004 taxes in the amount of $18,733.96. As further described in a memorandum from the Finance Director to the Town Manager dated June 4, 2015, entitled Abatement of Uncollectible 2004 Motor Vehicle Intangible Taxes.
As noted in the memorandum dated June 4 from the Finance Director, the recommended abatements represent a very minor uncollectible portion of the net tax levy for the 2004 year. The reason we use 2004 is because there's a 10-year statute of limitation as far as collections. The total amount that is being proposed for abatement represents 4/100ths of 1% of the net levy for that 2004 year. Trish also points out to the council that we use a collection agency once we've gone through and exhausted all of our collection office remedies, and that they have also been somewhat successful in aggressively seeking reimbursements on both the interest penalties as well as the outstanding taxes. Most of the dollars that we're recommending for abatement this evening is directly related to motor vehicles, which is probably the most difficult tax to collect, and a very small portion of the amount would, would be coming from real property. Most of that from tangible property, holdings of businesses that are no longer in business or available for us to, to obtain the tax payments. Recommend the council approve as presented on tonight's agenda.
I move approval of New Business, item G.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 That carries unanimously. Item H, a resolution authorizing awards of bid to two-year service contracts from July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2017, for electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and carpentry services to the following in accordance with the terms and conditions of the bid specifications and as further described in a memorandum from the building official to the town manager dated June 3, 2015, and entitled Two-Year Service Contracts.
The recommendation before you as presented on page nine of the agenda is to provide services to the lowest qualified provider. I would note that the lowest qualified provider for electrical is recommended in the name of W.H. Holland. They were higher as far as the hourly costs. However, we pay portal to portal in terms of services. The company that had a lower price from Cranston would have a longer travel time both to and from Cranston. When we calculated the cost for an electrician and apprentice on a per-hour basis, Holland became the lowest qualified bidder. So we're asking that Holland be named as well as for plumbing, HVAC, and carpentry, that the awards be made to the lowest presenters.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve new business item H and I just want to make a note that all four providers are local Wakefield businesses and that's great. I think that's wonderful.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. And I believe that is it.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.